City Council, City Council, City Council, City Council. She was at 2022 and now called to order. A former vice advisory. Pursuant to Assembly Bill 8861, the meeting will be held in person and via town conference slash electronically. In-person participation by the public is permitted. And remote electric public participation is also available through the following ways. By joining the City of Plymouth's City Council Zoom meeting and the Zoom meeting information is posted on the agenda. Members of the public participating electronically via this link and wishing to speak may do so during public comment by using the raise hand feature in the Zoom webinar. When dialing into Zoom at the phone number listed above, on the phone, use star nine to raise and lower your hand, use star six to mute and unmute your phone. You can submit a written public comment prior to the meeting by emailing or commenting to Deputy Sidney Kirk at the listed email address before 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Email public comments will be distributed to City Council and be part of the official minutes. Please have a roll call. Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Sted.
Here.
Councilmember Emre So.
Present.
Vice Mayor Ackerman here. Mayor Kleinfelder is active. We're pleased to ask for pleasure. In vocation, we have none. Is there a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda?
I make a motion to approve the City Council meeting then of June 9th. I second that motion.
A roll call for. Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Sted.
Aye.
Councilmember Emre So.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
Mayor Kleinfelder's active. Thank you. Item two, public comment. Under Government Code Section 549, 54.3, citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker's mail form to Sidney Kirk. For calling the COVID-19 Advisory, it starts on the first page of this agenda. Speakers will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state name and community of residence, but doing so is not required. Under provisions of the California Government Code, the City Council is prohibited from materially discussing or taking action by any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or an urgent need to take immediate action arose after the closing posting of the agenda. Is there any public comment or items not on the agenda? Speaker request?
I'd really like to spell the House view. My first question, since I won't say this is of emergency status, you guys can talk to me. Is it possible to have the city operate its code red feature after hours? Do you know?
It is possible. I can do everything.
Okay, because when we had a house fire over the last go, there was not a code red sent up to the city saying that the road was closed.
We were not aware. Nobody informed us that it was a fire.
Okay. Well, then that's something that I hope you guys get on with emergency services of the at Fort Worth. Because of this, that leads me to the idea of the fire trap that we call Hawksview. And I've been up here enough times over the years, kind of talking about the incompetence of the developers of Hawksview and traded hands. We never had the build out that was supposed to build over land drone. We still don't have it. Emergency vehicle access was called redundant, secondary access point or something like that. And I think we had that approval to us this week when Miller Way was completely blocked. And I guess the importance of that would be that, let's say, someone like me who's handicapped at some point probably could have made it up the hill if I needed to. Other people probably could have made it out with their vehicles. In fact, none of us did for a couple of hours or four hours. So I guess you could say this is emergency status and that it's time to deal with it and I'm not going away this time. So I know it's kind of, you know, kind of fun to delay it and kick the can down the road, but I got hell last time from Sandy Kittle's husband who screamed at me during meeting. All of it on record. I recorded it. It's all on Facebook. It's on the group called Amber Politics. And that's kind of the reception that I've gotten from City Council and from plans and everything that's gone on. It's just kind of what reminds me of what's what's happened in the past. And frankly, you're not serving me, nor anybody up there in Hawksview. And it's kind of dismaying. And, you know, I think you guys got to get on it and spend some money and get it going right now. And it done this year. It's been far as you meant, far as well. So I think dealing with the code red situation would be first. Everyone saw smoke in town. One of you could have talked to another in city staff. Someone could have done something on City Council. Anyone who works there could have done something. Get the code red out. That's, you know, it shouldn't have done. You know, you have a service, use it. And, you know, the fire keeps getting closer and closer to me each time. And the sign was his house is away. And it's kind of gross. So we got together. You know, I'm not here to make friends with this one this time. And frankly, anyone could have done something who works for the city here or who's on City Council or who's on the plane to the ship. People saw the smoke. So come up with a plan on what to do when there's a fire in town, especially when there's one in Hawksview, and give us a second way out. I know someone's got to be working on it. I'm sure it is being done. So you have some good news. And I get it done. It's not time for you. So you guys have anything to say? Since this is emergency status, go ahead here.
So, so to kind of piggyback on what you're saying, I don't know what the protocols are, but maybe there was a fire or something in a major fire department or the Sheriff's Department has a contact personally said they can come there or caffeine or whatever after hours. If that's a situation for eight hours, because that would happen to actually during hours. You know, it wasn't after hours at that point. And they have come to cover it up.
Yeah, that's something we can discuss with the emergency first responders, Amber Fire and other. See if there's something to do that process. And has the city reached out to the person whose house burned down to see if they need a cooling station or if they have, you know, something available to them to stay cool over the next few days since they don't have any power, things like that. See if anyone's reached out to the city. Generally, that's a function of Amber Fire as well as Red Cross and other folks. They generally will get that first information. Usually not a city function. We can do things like that, but generally Red Cross or others. That's where you. Does anyone else have anything to say about emergency?
Yeah, I'll say a few things about that excuses area. I didn't fire. I'm not a fire teller. Of course, I would work out. So I might not fire. I can sit here and act like Michael doesn't know what's happened in the past, but know the previous, absolutely previous process. I also think that the process of how many city managers have been through the last few years is.
Five or six.
Huh?
It's either five or six. I've lost you.
Yeah.
With how much the ball has dropped on this one. I know we've had a close session, but I can't discuss out of what's up. Of course, I'm sure it. I wasn't going to do it. I'm sure there was another consequence for that. I'm not going to speak for anyone that was going to break that up at the meeting. I'm sure that I am. Mary Ann, I know that we talked about the situation and I brought you up to speed on what's going on in Hawksview.
Yeah, no, no, no questions for me necessarily, but just re, but just reinforcement to you that you you mentioned something that you're not going to go away. And I encourage you to not go away. We need your force. We need you to, we need somebody from the community. This is, this is what gets things moving. So I'm glad you're here. But sorry, it's under these circumstances, under this situation. It is a safety issue. Can't occur to the can't, the can't to the current for a safety issue.
Roughly, how many homes are there in Hawks?
Ninety, I think.
And I wonder how many homes, how many people in Hawksview have come up here and talked to the council in years past about the same issue we talked about, right? This thing, I mean, it's, I hear you. I feel your pain. I hope you're right. You're a citizen, right? But there's been a big outcry from your community up there. And Peter's talked a lot about it. You've talked a lot about it. I've heard nothing from anybody else. So maybe there needs to be a little bit of a group of your, your, your people who live in Hawks, want to get together and have some ideas as well.
We, we did do that last time. We, we went door to door this 2016, I believe, or 2018 or it was 2014, just one of the times. And so door to door establishments, gathered a club, you're represented. And so that's kind of where it is. So yes, we have gotten it together, but, but it's, it's been done. It has been done. And now we see that we have our road is blocked during fires. And that private meal bar up there, they have to be right on the corner that closes down the street. And thank God it wasn't near the field. Now, so I'm just going to interject real quick. I know it feels like an emergency. It wouldn't be classified, this item as an emergency item. So we probably need to wrap up because we're getting into a discussion that should be agendaized, that we're going to get in much deeper. I've taken a lot of notes. There's some good information given. I think we have some tapeaways and things that we can get down and bring back. So show whatever it is to be agendaized.
Is there, is there any other public comment? Thank you.
The general coordinator, I was sitting here listening to this and realizing that we're going to have 250 homes or more and see if they're going one way out before they get secondary ground over there. Currently, we have a, a, a little waste on one way out. So it's, it's, it's probably a certain building that's still open, which is, it's, it's things that should have been taken here when we, when we're moving forward. I wanted to mention that they went, they had a very good happy meeting this afternoon or this morning with that downtown, the communication project going on, like 49, we got other designers in all that is, is they're tied to that this apartment, walking down the avenue. Then we'll probably tell you more about that later. We, that was made well, we're working on a concept for a walking trail to make a loop trail through across the way, each and two places. There was a Sierra, it's such a perfect little bit of trail. And that's probably our start of the project. I'm only, it was still a bit of a, and they, they figured that we're already bringing that to you very soon. Just tell people that. The events that we had there for the world, they was turned out to be very exciting. Very well received. We'll thank you very much for that.
Turn off the mic, John. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
There was one more thing on my head. Are you guys talking? There was, there was one more thing on there. If I don't do it, it's going to hurt me. Amber Slusser asked me to ask you down here about food trucks. One, one speaker of her on the comment. I'm sorry you forgot it. We need that. We don't force you to get the loud everyone else. So that's, that's the idea. But if we ascend wherever we want to, to the council, we know. Well, they can't hear what else I said.
Any other public comment from anybody here at City Hall? A public comment from anybody on Zoom?
Yes. We have Meredith Anderson.
I'm sorry. I'm going to interrupt you for, I'm going to interrupt you. Did I see him? Yes, I called. Elizabeth, I just wanted to piggyback on Michael and I'm just kind of taking it back with the comment from the council in that to, and I probably took it the wrong way in telling Michael that a group of people from town have to get together and, and say that there's a safety issue when we have elected officials that we, we elected you, we put our trust into you to, to provide our safety and to have foresight and to look at these things. And yes, it's the own stuff us to bring things forward, but I'm taken aback as a longtime member of this community to be told, to, to have a life kind of friend of mine be told, well, you have to get a group from your, nobody has from your, your subdivision has come and said anything about this being a safety issue when, when really it, the council should, you can't be all ears and all eyes, but, but I'm just a little appalled at, at that. And I hope that I misunderstood and that is not the council's take because I really have my trust in all of you to make sure that we're all safe in town. Thank you.
So Elizabeth, I've been a council for 12 years. I started this process with this point, 12 years ago, and have met road block after road block. And so we've kind of run it 12 years. It's been one of my champion projects that has just not been championed by the council. So it's tough. But we've had lots of council members coming up. I mean, 12 years, every time it comes up, it gets started. So you're here. And that's not going to be nice. This is what it is. So anywhere.
I think that was primarily directed to make my comments. The only thing is, there's only been one person said in a council year now, even talked about this, and that's Peter. Nobody since I've been here has even meant, I realize it's, it's pretty obvious. There needs, there needs to be another ex out of Hawks. But I just feel a little appalled that Peter is the only one that's ever mentioned. And as, as he pointed out, for the longest time, it's fallen deaf ears. And I think that probably there's a little more enthusiasm about doing something about that, that probably the general public knows about right now. I won't invite Frank.
Yeah.
My point is that there's been some discussion that probably most people here in the county do not know.
Yeah, I don't want to go with it. That's a privilege to promise. But I'll, I'll say that, that we have to end it because this is not been agendaized. There is direction. Staff is looking at it. I've had discussions with the city engineer to take real material efforts in a way that I can justify the size of what the city's had here. So there is progress. It's just that time.
Okay. And thank you. I think we have somebody on Zoom that would like to make a comment?
Yes.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Meredith Anderson and I work for the Sierra Business Council, a nonprofit organization serving communities like in the Sierra Nevada, like Plymouth. Sierra Business Council runs the Sierra Nevada Energy Watch program, which is an energy efficiency program under PG&E. So through the Energy Watch, we offer free energy technical services to public agencies and small businesses within the Sierra Nevada region. So these services range from assessing your facility's energy use performance, facilitating free building, energy audits, and connecting you to funding opportunities to implement energy efficiency measures that save energy and money. We would work directly with Plymouth staff. We can assist in retrofitting or upgrading lighting, refrigeration and heating, ventilation and air conditioning systems to save money during the summer and keep indoor air quality safe during wildfire season. We recognize that many of our rural public agencies are understaffed, under capacity and on tight budgets. So we've set up our program to sit at your side of the table and serve you as your energy manager. My team and I are aware that public agencies are being bombarded with sales pitches from consulting companies, some with pitches that seem too good to be true. We understand that this can be overwhelming. So think of Sierra Nevada Energy Watch as a no cost third part, third party with your best interests in mind. We can help you vet consulting companies, determine energy project feasibility, and help you understand different programs or financial offerings to make sure you're getting the best services and energy savings. The Sierra Nevada Energy Watch is able to offer these services at no cost because we are funded by the Public Purpose Program charged that Plymouth pays on their PG&E bill. You have already paid for these services, so we encourage you to take advantage of them. If helpful, we can also provide a more in-depth presentation on how we can serve you as an agendaized item at a future council meeting. You can reach us by emailing us at snew, S-N-E-W at sierra business dot org. Please let me know if you have any questions and thank you so much for your time.
Anybody else on Zoom who would like to speak during public comment or anything not on the agenda?
No other hands are raised at this time.
Thank you. Council members?
Yes, our meeting in July 28th needs to be canceled. That now. So can we ask? Yeah.
No.
I guess probably more appropriate again. Okay. So we'll, we'll get eyes and come out of the council.
Any, we've received a mail, email, text messages, anything like that for public comment? I provided copy to each of. Okay, so for the record, we did receive an email regarding, oh, this is regarding a Jedi. So I'll wait until it has to be a Jedi. Appointment's presentations, item three, appointments presentations, there are none. And moving on to item four, consent calendar items, we have 5.1, approval of the meeting minutes for May 26th of 2022. Any general correspondence that has been received? That we need to know? In your packet, there is a, in a packet for legal. For what?
Legal cases.
Okay, so we've received correspondence from the legal of California states.
I was gonna ask, I was gonna ask the whole message, but we talked about it.
Okay. They are handled by so long as. Item 5.3 to adopt resolution 2022 dash 10. Calling a general municipal election and requesting the Board of Supervisors of Amara County to consolidate the general municipal election to be held on November 8th of 2022 pursuant to section 10403 of the Elections Code. And then item 5.4, adopt resolution 2022 dash 11, 80 through 61, with renewal of virtual meetings. Are there any council comments?
I have a question, Frank. On 5.4, sorry, I'm going to interrupt you. Sorry, but make sure you also put a comment about the calendar club.
I'm sorry, public comment, what?
I'll make sure this public comment, opportunity for the second caller. Hey, Frank, on 5.4, for the resolution for the virtual meetings, did we have to do one of those every so often or do these meetings? Every 30 days. I'll leave it at 30 days. I have a question. I'll piggyback on that question slightly. I'm happy to field them, but just so you know, the procedure technically is either you, you can, you know, the best case, there's any discussion on it, it's best to pull it all, you know, as a writer. But.
Is 5.3, you said this happened every year or was this? Do we have to pull everything to combine issues? Is that something?
I'll answer the question. So we don't pull everything. I, 5.3 is consolidate, call the election, consolidate the elections code requires that. It actually doesn't require, it requires a call to election. Technically, you don't have to consolidate. You don't have to pay for it all. And there's an economy scale to coincide with the, our weaker stakeholders for the county. So it's, that's virtually the practice in California is to call and consolidate the primary election for the officer. Yes, that's what I said. So I do remember my question. So my question was, at some point, can we drop the meeting? I mean, is that something that is, or unless, if you want to have the discussion, that definitely should be rolled in the second caller. Does that qualify? Yes or no? Yes, it can. Yes, it can. But if you don't anymore, then that's. That's fine. Sorry. Okay.
You don't need to do that.
Do we have any public comment? Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar? I mean, our whole comment, no, do we have any public comment on the consent calendar? Are you up to? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent counter?
No, no, Bill. I may have a motion approved, Resolution number 2022 dash 10, every vote.
You can. Yeah, you can just make a motion to approve and send calendar or send it.
Okay. I do. I'll say. Do you have one? I'll say my own too. No, because I think we're going to do the litter data.
So we have a. So we have a, a vote, the motion's been made and a second vote. So roll call vote? Vote call vote, Councilmember White. Councilperson. Councilmember Amoruso. I spare half of it. Aye, thank you. Public hearings, there are none. Item 6, regular agenda items. Item 7.1, discussion regarding city of Plymouth traffic and safety issues on Highway 49 and Mill Street and direction regarding possible traffic calming solutions.
Yeah, Kathleen has a report here, she's gonna present that with the information and we'll scan her questions after public comment.
Good evening, everyone. So it's come to our attention through the general public that Mill Street in particular, this also does affect pod pushers as well. Is having major traffic issues, basically speeding issues. Public works and engineers have been discussing these issues. And quite honestly, the, the intersection there from the highway to the placement of Lucas Poplar and Mill Street is huge. There's no other way to explain that. It's, it's very unusually large, which is a motivator for people to move fast and in directions we may not want them to go. It, it's just a lot of open space that gives people the freedom to make poor choices, basically. And they're ignoring our 25 mile an hour residential speed limits there. Now, I didn't have a whole lot of time, but I put together some of what I thought were good choices to traffic calm the area. And I, I put them together in level speeds. If you look at traffic calming, you can do something that's minor or you could do something that's severe to change the traffic flow and the patterns. So if we started just something really basic, like a level one, we could look at something like the solar speed signs. Where when you come up, they start to become more popular, you see what your speed is when you, when you go by. But the bad side of that is, the downside is that we're really relying on the drivers' awareness of looking at that sign and their cooperation in saying, oops, I'm going too fast, I need to slow down. So it has its pluses and its minuses, because you will have people that say, oh, I didn't know I was going that fast. But you're also going to just rely on the functions of the drivers going by. And they're not cheap items. I priced them out and you'd be looking at about $9,000 to place two on Mill Street going in each direction. So that's, that's another you know, thing to look at there. It, it's not necessarily your best cost effectiveness in the, the eyes of public works engineering. Traffic calming level two. The quickest, easiest way we can have impact on Mill Street would be to create a three-way stop at Mill Street and Mineral, Mineral Street, which would cause traffic to come to a stop in the middle, which would slow them down significantly if they physically had to stop and restart. That's an easy fix for public works, our own staff could do that. The materials are minimal and cost, I priced it out, I think we could do it for about $600. We could do it fairly quickly, I would just take order of the materials and public work staff could have it up in a day. So that, that's a thought, it could be a quick answer, it doesn't have to be the only answer. You could also add a refabricated speed humps to the street along with the stop signs. That cost is coming out to around $4,500 to do that. Or there's other options as well that you could add to the stop signs. All of these things could be single or a collection of different items to slow traffic. If you look at a traffic calming level three, that this would be a level that would physically impede vehicles. It's not as minor as the other ways of speed over there. One idea is straight Mill Street as a not a through street, dead ended at the intersection. We would need a turnaround for fire, they are requiring that. I'm not sure how receptive the residents in that area would be to having their street closed off with that in. But it is a possibility. The cost estimate for that would be five to $10,000 to get that rolling. Another thought on traffic calming level three would be an engineering redesign of the actual intersection where these three streets come together and, and meet with Highway 49. Like I said in the beginning, the, this intersection is just too large, it needs control. Now, there's a quick map that Matt Oswald did for me, that's included in this packet and it shows where he can re-engineer the intersection to make the lanes light up better and to make everything on a much smaller scale. So the cars would not be able to make this swooping. The, the biggest problem we seem to have is as people are heading north on 49, they can make a left-hand turn there. They make the left-hand turn at the full highway speed and then they head down Mill Street and they never slow down. And that intersection is so wide that it makes it very easy for that traffic pattern to happen.
That kind of gives it like a slow shot.
Yeah, it's, it's very easy not to slow down at all coming off the highway and moving into town street. Matt, like I said, Matt did this really quick one to help us out for tonight. It, it's not a set of stone thing. There's the areas where the lines are in there, there are several options. You could literally remove the pavement from there, so there is no road in that section. You can stripe it, there's other like speed bump type of things. The possibility of, of using that space maybe to extend walkways to cross the street at that point is there. It, it's open for discussion and more explicit engineering, but like I said, we, we have a short time. So we were trying to just get the general ideas out of there, but there's several ways you could go to have engineers redesign that and, and physically make that so it's not possible to make that very fast swooping left turn. Also, I, I had some information from one of our other engineers. And I thought he had a great idea and it came after this report, but I just thought it would be good to share. This is something that wouldn't happen overnight, it involves Caltrans. There is the possibility that we could request from Caltrans to make that intersection a right turn only intersection, which means that only people traveling in the southern direction could get off on a right turn into that area. The left-hand turn lane, where they come very fast off the highway, would, would no longer be allowed. There would be some kind of barrier there, small barrier, no left-hand turn lane. It would keep people from coming off that highway very fast into town. That's also, I thought a very good idea, but like I said, that, that would be a much more long-term thing. It's, we could have to work in cooperation with Caltrans and get them to buy into that as a safety issue. But it is a possibility. So, I mean, I'm, I'm estimating 10 to 20,000 if we're looking at the engineering department redesigning the intersection.
Probably considerably more than that of whole redesign with engineering, but those are good.
Yeah, I, like I said, I, I did consult with Matt and, and he helped me with these numbers and, and it really depends. If you're, if you're just gonna do the striping, then it's gonna be much less expensive. But on the other side, the striping is just a warning, it doesn't really physically stop them from there yet. So there are different options on that.
So council, in a nutshell, I think what our recommendation is, there's some long, longer terms, more permanent fixes that I, that I would recommend. And I think we recommend you look at. And that would, that would leave with the redesign of that intersection. Because it's a, it's a horrible, messy intersection. It's not unusual to see those kinds of intersections that just sort of happen over time as a city grows. So that really does need to be redesigned. And how that's redesigned is a, a lengthier, very detailed discussion with lots of cost estimates and engineering things. In the short term, there's a few things that we can do to, we'll put a Band-Aid on it for now and see how it works. Obviously, the least expensive is to create a three-way stop. Now, there's no perfect solution here. I know with any of these Band-Aid fixes, it, it's not gonna be perfect. A three-way stop, you're gonna have people probably running the stop sign because they don't know it or screeching door off because there's a stop sign here and they're not used to seeing it. If you do the flashing lights or the, the speed lights, they're $9,000, that's $9,000, that's a lot of money. Do they work? They do tend to work because when you're going 20 miles an hour over the speed limit, it's flashing and it's telling you and every neighbor and everybody out there you're going 45 or 50 or 60 or 80 in a 25 zone. So it's, it does tell you that. We do have the, the trailers, I think, that need to have a software program on those. You know, once we get those things done and outfitted, I'm sure we could arrange to have those out there for a while. Again, that's something that warrants the folks for a period of time until they get used to it. But I would recommend that you do something that's not too expensive right now, maybe try a three-way stop. Because it's something we can do very quickly, possibly putting something at the corner or somewhere before the stop sign, prepare to stop, stop, and get something like that. And let's see how that works and then take a look at some of these other options in the long term. With this in mind, we have lots of transportation issues that we need to take a look at as well. For example, we talked about the one in, one out into the subdivision, the Hox Nest, right? The Hoxview. Hoxview, you know, that's, that's another pressing issue that we need to take a look at. So when we're trying to finance things and there's money to be spent on certain things, you're trying to figure out where the priorities are right now. So our recommendation is take a look at some of these. If there's an option you'd like us to go with, like putting in some stop signs right now and seeing how that does to kind of pull people back on the gas pedal. We can do that very quickly and easily and then schedule some additional discussion with you on more permanent better fixes for that intersection.
Before we go ahead and address the debate or we just open this question?
No, we can take directions tonight on this, you'll want to open this up for public comment. So our presentation's done, we'll stand for questions, but I take public comment first if the public has some thoughts on that.
Thank you, Kathleen, for your, your, your staff report. And you say you had, you didn't have a lot of time, you did a fantastic job, I gave some really good options to work with. On that note, I would like to open this for public comments for anybody here at City Hall.
Yeah, over. The interesting thing is I still have a lot of friends in the last eight years on the corner of Mill Street, Main Street. This is really a side effect of the roundabout. People could come off the highway, go 15 miles an hour up Mill Street and get to the home and land the street, tense and expensive, and they go up the door. Basically, people are in a hurry. But there's a couple of things that the, the traffic calming speed things, lights. The city vital now, so those were being available to all cities in the county through the advertising transportation commission, with a bright program they have. Without any cost to the city, so that needs to be one avenue that you can look at. The other thing that's very effective in getting people's attention is just the simple rumble strips. They use in construction sites on highway. We can probably get the use of some rumble strips from one of these contractors and, and come down there and see how it affects it, you know? But when it's speed bump, it could be better, or good though. But the rumble strips are very effective in getting somebody's attention and then it's totally, you know, with the, you know, everyone is, if you want to see how that. If you're gonna do it. But those, I, I'm sure we could probably give this a perfect amount and kind of just see. So those are two things that are constructive and, and we need to get help, a judge, and getting the help is, we're truly being able to get this, to get those assignments, that they have to see. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Thank you.
You know, we have a property on Pacific Street, which is actually a straight line of poplar across the highway to Tinkin Flatt. Same issue there, they're coming off the highway, Pacific Street is about a 45-degree angle. Mill Street, I don't even think it's a 45-degree angle, so there's no reason for anybody to slow down. They just don't. So a rumble strip, a speed bump at the beginning of Mill Street, maybe in the middle, I don't know. Does anybody know how much a, a speed bump costs?
Yeah, I had some thoughts here. So if you get a refabricated speed hump, it's about $4,500 to the bosom.
As the plastic ones that, yeah, right.
They're, they're pre-fab, they're, they're not really plastic, they're more of a, it's like a old material.
Right, well, I think in the short term, I mean, I can't see paying engineers to redesign this intersection that's been away for 100 years when if you have something there that they have to slow down to, they will slow down. And I talked to Kathleen the other day about the same issue on Pacific Street, it's a 50 mile an hour zone. And they fly by our houses at 50 miles an hour. What do you do? I don't know.
Steve, the one, the one thing I, I do want to comment on, and I said I have not a lot of time to research everything, but there could be some concerns when you start putting depending on where you place them and how you signage them. When you're talking rumble strips and speed humps, then if we're gonna do things like that, we really have to get them done correctly. Because if somebody comes off the highway, another coming off the highway at 5 miles an hour, and they start to make a turn on a residential street and they're not expecting it and they hit those items really fast and get hurt, it could come back to us. So there might be some more engineering cost to that that I haven't accounted for.
Okay, yeah, no, that's fine. I just, I see the money the city spent across the street on the plaza and I think they could have spent the money in a better way, I don't know.
Thank you, any other public comments from anybody here at City Hall? Any public, any public comments from anybody on Zoom?
No.
And we did receive some correspondence on this agenda item from Carol Emerson, who sent in an email with today's date on this agenda item. So we'll have that added to the record. I think that available, or make that available very quickly, we'd like to see that. Or council member comments, please?
I go?
Yes.
Well, I, I got, I got a few questions, just because I know.
Well, I, I, I got, I got a few questions just because I know that we have a resident on Mill Street here also working for the city. Both ways of traffic, do you want to see it going head fast four-way or both ways? So.
Both ways.
Both ways. That's what I was saying. Yeah, that's what I was saying. I understand the slush shot effect on the, the downside of it. I'm not gonna lie, I use Mill Street every day because it's a nice old shortcut like you just talked and I've seen cars rip down it. Have we, have we reached out to the Sheriff's Department? Is that, I don't know. A ticket, a ticket would sure put me in check. Seems to be that. Even if it's off on the CHP. Okay, so has anyone reached out to? Has anyone reached out to the CHP?
On Mill Street, it would be CHP and not Sheriff's Department.
Sheriff's don't write for me necessarily, as it rules. It's just, it is what it is.
So we, we can reach out to law enforcement. My guess is that I don't want this to sound like I don't believe it's a high priority. But when you're talking about a larger agency that has this, that they're trying to figure out where to put limited resources, this likely will not be a high priority for them, but we'll still reach out though and find out what's left.
Thank you. And then I, I know when the, the speed bump that put out here, and I, I guess I should backtrack a little bit. Before the roundabout, when they very first, when the four-way cross is stopped, I'm not gonna lie, I didn't see traffic going. I went right through it and went, oh, there's stop signs. There are no, oops. So the stop sign thing, I think we almost could call more accidents because that's just my impression.
Yeah, there's, again, there's nothing perfect. I'm gonna jump in on that and then I'll let Kathleen respond. There is nothing perfect. There, there certainly could be people blowing right through the stop sign as they do at any stop sign. It is a T-intersection, which has other pros and cons. The pros are you don't have cross traffic both directions. The likelihood is the folks that are gonna be running it are the ones that don't have stop signs right now. It becomes a bigger issue if you have a four-way crosses both areas and you, you don't have a four-way stop. A lot of times people just assume that they don't have to stop and they blow through it or whatever. So the, the downside is that when you're heading north with that T coming to the, the, from the left, you don't expect a stop sign there. You don't really have a corner that you're coming to where stop signs usually are. And the other thing I would say is I'm breaking a cardinal traffic rule. Your stop signs are not meant for traffic calming. They're meant to control intersections. But in this case, it might be all way, one of several to help slow folks down coming through there until we do some other things if that's something. I think, you know, there's lots of other options that have been thrown out here that I think are good ideas to look at. But if we're looking to do something fairly quickly, stop signs can be in there fairly soon. And just know that, yeah, you might have some people running stop signs. So they it's, it's a learning thing is what you're trying to do. It's the same thing with putting those flashing speed thing, signs out there. Yeah, it's on the people, but it's, it, it's learning. It makes them realize, oh, my gosh, I'm going 40 miles an hour over the speed limit and this thing's flashing at me and everybody sees that. It's not just me. It's just one of those things and studies show that they're affected, that they are affected. It does slow down traffic. It worked really well in that because, yeah, I don't need to catch it.
Okay, and then the last thing is I think I could be wrong. They come off that, or a little bump out here is just let the main street's traffic down. They actually be going. And I do know that some people still, but, you know. I, so I, I don't know. I, that the speed bump thing, we all kind of like, or at least I like my people a lot and I don't wanna do it. So that's just my, that's just a problem.
Keith, can I just make a comment about the roundabout stop signs? Just for historical record, so to speak, those signs were put in before dawn without any knowledge of the city or any information put forth to the general public. It was in booksie and not on the city's part. But if we were to install a three-way stop, I definitely do informational shout-outs to try to give everybody a heads up. I mean, it wouldn't be done like it was done out there.
I told, and I totally understand that. This is a much different city than it was when we initially got just the four-way cross there. I, I, I know that for a fact with population.
Councilmember Emerson, do you have anything else you'd like to comment on this?
Yeah, I, I, there's been a lot of good advice, sorry. But I think the quickest, most prestigious and financially responsible would be the stop signs. And just see how that works. I mean, it's a good, easy, quick fix and it does, we add some scripts to it, you know, we, we add to, it always happens, right? But see if that just, like I said, I was so, so, so roll.
I agree, the stop signs. Put in on Monday. I'm gonna bring up all this dispensing ideas. Kathleen, I question that your, your, your speed bumps is $45. I assume it's 300. Or is that, is that the first speed bump, $45?
That was, that was for two speed humps, one for each direction on Mill. I didn't have one on Mineral coming in where the stop already is. I could be wrong, but I, I'm, I've not received any complaints on Mineral. I said this obviously, but that's okay. They can let me know. The same type of speeding problems that I'm getting complaints on Mill Street.
So why not put the signs in and also use our two, our two trailers? That we have the owner?
That is a foggy area. I wasn't involved in that and I'm trying to patch things together. I buy theory on those as we don't own them. I think they were supposed to belong to the sheriff. But the, Plymouth was to be their place.
Right, I understand. You wanted to use it for a while.
Yeah, I don't think there's any problem with us using that other than I have to get with the company and try to unwind all the paperwork to get new staff members access and, and learn the computerized portion of it to get them up.
But what we'll do as well is we'll reach out to the sheriff's office, find out who has ownership and responsibility in the sheriff's office if they own it. Do they pay for that? Are they responsible for getting programs that they're usable here? Can we decide where they're gonna go as they write that? We'll talk to them and find out. We'll, we'll.
We have Joyce is, works in the office and she has a comment.
Hi, this is Joyce Terwinski. Those radar or those machines that were purchased by the city were supposed to be purchased by the sheriff's department, not us. Along with two vehicles. That's what city council approved.
Joyce, was that part of the cops fund? Because I somewhere got that impression that I was cops fund.
Yes, it was.
So regardless, we have those things sitting there. We'll figure out what's going on and how to get them active. How, when, after.
Keith, do you have something else you wanted to say? Joyce, okay. And then I just.
I did, but I.
Okay. I, I wanna be sure, I'm interested in you to speak and I just, I just wanna add my personal feelings. I'm also in favor of the stop signs. It just seems like a, a real reasonable action item that can be taken now and not break the budget and hopefully it'll make a difference. So does the council body consensus want to give?
Yeah, consensus is fine. There's no formal motion needed. I would just ask, make sure Kathleen has the direction taken here if you want.
Can I add, can I, can I add to that? Is there, Kathleen, you're really, what John's saying, serious? Grab any of maybe versus for those flashing solar lights that may happen for that?
Yeah, I can reach out to A C Ts.
So do we, as a council, do we agree that we don't need a staff direction to go ahead and install the, the three stop signs as recommended? Okay, sounds great.
So I'll just, I'll just clarify because I have the stop signs. I also heard looking for that. Anything else? The rumble strips? Yeah, rumble strips, please.
Thank you. Item 7.2, we'll move on to item 7.2 of update and discussion regarding the pending, regarding pending interest of city manager vacancy and city manager recruitment. So we're, we, we have staff report on that.
Brady, do you want me to do this here? I'll jump in on this as you're perking. Your staff report kind of outlines what we're doing as far as recruitment goes. And I think so far the message is getting out there. We've gotten a handful of applications in. There's some good ones, decent ones there that I think when the first review happens here at the end of the month, you'll have an opportunity to kind of pull through those and decide who you would like to speak with, screen a little bit further interview, go through that process. This outlines a little bit of what we've done. Really Maria has done this work. Ledger dispatch for Friday's ads in the paper. That was, there was an online posting that appeared immediately upon receipt of the ad on May 17th. Posting for Fridays. It's online for 30 days with potential renewal. City News, you see in there, their weekly newsletter goes out to California cities. The job is posted weekly there on May 18th. It runs for 30 days. Sacramento Beat for the Sunday paper ad, that's 30 days online as well as the print ad for Sunday. Is that correct? It's, it's online posted on May 27th. It also includes posting LinkedIn, Career Builder, indeed, social media and, and other things. I think we've gotten a good response for the Sacramento Beat. Actually, there's been a lot of folks that have responded off of that one. Western City Magazine Job Board, it's also, it posted there on May 31st and it will run there for 30 days. And that generally fits the cities in the western states of the U.S. And then it's posted on our Clinton City website and around town. And again, one of the most effective is Word Mountain. I've, I've talked with John and others and you and you all have said, hey, we're, we're talking to people. I know somebody who may be interested. Ask them to apply. So that's, that's a wonderful way as well. Word Mountain, but you can't beat that. So there's some interest that's been expressed and I think by the end of the month we'll have an opportunity. There's some concern, obviously. My last day here will be next week. I'll be here next week for a few days, getting some work done, trying to wrap some things up. There's been some questions, well, what do we do after that? I'll give you my recommendation. And it's unoptioned. There's other things that you can do. And I have talked with Kathleen and I'm looking for her to either do this or go and, you know, move forward with that. My recommendation is that you, after I'm gone, you have Kathleen as kind of the interim acting as the POC to just be that conduit of information between you and the rest of the staff. She would be your point of contact just to kind of keep things floating and, and, and keep us going until you have a permanent city manager in place. I would be very careful about throwing new projects or way, new things if you want to jump on. This isn't the time to do that. I would also be very careful in doing that when you do get a new city manager in place. There needs to be a period of time for her or him to get their feet solid on the ground, figure out what's going on here, get to know all of you, build the relationships and start tackling some of these priorities that you have. So I would recommend that you, you do that after I leave. You, you, you have her take that role on. I wouldn't do that for any more than about 30 days. I think you go beyond that. It's just, it's too much on her shoulders trying to run public works as well as everything else. And so that would be my recommendation. You do that the end of the month, you do a review of the, of the resumes, applications you've received. And then make a decision at that point if you feel like, yeah, we've got some good applicants here, let's conduct some interviews. We think we can get somebody on within the next few weeks to a month or whatever. And at that point, I think you're fine. If you find that you want to extend this out, it might take a little bit longer than a few weeks to a month. Then at that point, you can look at another intern if you like bringing in somebody. The challenge of bringing in another intern, if you've only got about a month, is it really, I've been here for what, over a month? How long have I been here? Time flies. Has it been more than a month? Yeah, five weeks. I'll tell you what, I'm just starting to feel comfortable. And I've been doing this for 20 years. I mean, I'm still discovering and learning and, you know, John comes by and others come by and they're, they're kind of talking with me, giving me information. I'm like, oh, okay. So it takes time and just to bring in an intern that's gonna be here for, you know, another month or so, they're just gonna get the car started and then have to turn it off and hand the keys to somebody else and, and not have an opportunity to really get in there to do much. I think when you brought me on board, the hope is that I'd be here for a longer than five or six weeks. And at the time, I thought that was possible, but so along if when that permanent job comes up, then you all have to get your notice and, and that happened sooner than I thought. It, it, I, I didn't expect that to happen 13 more months. It did, so that's where we're at. And so I'll stand for questions if you have any for me on this and, and how you feel about this or there's some other things you want to explore.
Thank you. Do, do we have any public comments from anybody here at City Hall on this item? We'll ask Mr. Parker on the last slide, also.
I, I just wanted to say that it's been a pleasure and having been working for us in the last five weeks. And I just kind of prefer a well this evening and I hope that you and Bobby and coming back on Saturday or Sunday and, and we'll be back. It's really been a pleasure and, and thank you for coming to rescue the party, City.
I appreciate those kind of words. I have to tell you, your city does not need to be rescued. You, you have, you have a fine staff and engaged citizens and committed council. And this has been a pleasure, really is. So I'm, I'm happy to come back and, and spend some time. I, I think wherever you hire will probably be just fine without me, but if there are questions, you all have my contact information. Get ahold of Frank and you can get ahold of me and I'm happy to talk a bit. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Do, do we have any other public comments? Nobody here at City Hall. Anybody on Zoom that would like to make a public comment?
No raised hands.
No raised hands. And we don't have the emails, texts, anything like that on this item? No. Okay, thank you. So I'll open it up for council discussion. Go ahead, Peter.
Okay, thank you very much. I know I have one really quick question. So even though it's only a month, is there any way you can give some short-term compensation? I know I have one really quick question. So even though it's only a month, is there any way you can give some short-term compensation? Maybe she can take on another role. This is going to be very stressful for her. I mean, I know Kathleen, we kind of came on at the same time. Yeah, I mean, there's, there's.
That's entirely at the council. I don't know if we want to get into that kind of discussion here.
I don't.
Counsel, I can give you afterwards individually a couple of my thoughts where they actually lies. And thank you for coming. Give me a hard answer.
Council member White?
I just want to say thank you.
Council member Sin?
I also want to say thank you. Based on elaborate situations, we let us disappoint that would be possible. You say we have a handful of applicants right now and could you move those over for us before we leave?
Yeah, I'm, I've been talking to Maria every day. What do we got? And she brings them in and I look at them and give them back. So I, I looked at them all.
From that, you have to say a much more qualified to move those over and give us your thoughts. Once, once you leave, you're going to get a lot on your plate real quick, right? So I think you're going to be very.
I've been drinking out of that fire hose here. I'm going to be drinking out of the fire hose the next, the next two positions. So, but again, I'm happy to stay in contact and help out with the screening if you would like when you get there.
You made a really good comment the other day about having the council get together with the new state, new city manager at some point. A retreat. Is that something we can talk about here or is?
Yeah, it's not really on the agenda, but I think that's one of the expectations. I think you should set that expectation of the next state manager to have a council retreat where you all can get on the same page with what you're accomplishing.
So I'll, I'll go ahead and maybe invite comments and thoughts on this. And again, you know, I also want to say thank you for what you've done for us and your, your willingness to, to spend time here and, and, you know, that. I'm, I'm, I'm grateful and I'm especially grateful that we had an opportunity to have you come, spend some time. And I know it was maybe not as long as we would have liked, but I think the benefit is given your 20 plus years as a city manager. I think it's been good to have some people with your experience and knowledge come in and take a look and to be able to leave and say, we're, we're in good shape. And so thank you for that. I also want to thank Kathleen for your willingness to step up. And, and I'm, I'm a little bit torn on this. And I trust your judgment recommendations. And I think the reason I'm torn is because if we received a couple of resumes. I just, I don't want to see us rush into selecting somebody and not, not really knowing how many resumes, but all the patients and that sort of thing. It makes it a little bit, you know, for me personally, it's a little tough to, to make this decision. However, trusting with your recommendation. And who would, who would lead us in, you know, the interview process and selecting the new city manager? Because to me that seems to be like a whole human resources thing. And so who would, who would lead us in that?
Yeah, Maria is over HR. So she'd be putting together packets and putting together maybe a list of potential questions that you would ask. And there's a process that you'll want to go through that so that you're sure it's legal and it's, it's appropriate. One candidate is treated differently from other candidates, but Maria can put those together. She has experience. You'll, you'll, I would suggest you, you, you include your city attorney in, in this process. And I always say this, city managers and city attorneys are joined at the head when they, when they do their jobs well. And as a city manager, I rely when hiring department heads in larger cities, I'll rely on the city, the city attorney's input and their advice and their counsel. And I think it would be wise to, to bring the city attorney on board and if he's willing. And I'm sure if you're paying us hourly wage, you know, that's part of what he's here for and, and utilize that. You can certainly build, and Maria will walk you through this. You can build a panel of professional city managers who might help interview candidates as well as the council. So there's definitely. Maria and I talked about that and she kind of has a handle on that.
If, if we were to receive, say, 20 resumes by the end of the month and all 20 are not going to be brought forth to the council, right? Most likely?
Well, if you receive 20, that's a lot.
Okay, let's say a dozen.
I, I, I felt that if you had eight to 10, you're doing pretty well. For a community this size, your reach, that's, that's pretty good. That's, I think if it's a dozen resumes, it's probably something you'll do, I assume in close session. Because it's, it's, it's part of the recruitment at personnel discussion. Yeah. So if we're doing, if we get all 10. What, what, what happened before was there was an act, actually, there was a screening that was done to make sure that some of them, and the queues, whatever they are. So that's, and that's actually more of a mysterious decision because there aren't a lot of discretion. It's just you don't have college degree or whatever the queues are. That is vetted off the table. And then assuming you have a viable list that's not too long, then hopefully in the interest of time, this council will be able to get through those candidates in close session. It's a long list and they brought discussion about a, a, a city manager panel to screen through the first cut and then to get to the council. But we'll have to see how long the list stacks up. I just know whatever it is, we want to be efficient and, and calm. So. Yeah, I would see how many candidates, how many applications do you have first? And then you can sit down and decide. Well, if it is 20 or something, I think the council probably wants that to be whittled down to those that are, you know, a good five or six or seven. Then you all can take a look at. The recruitments that I've been involved with in the past, that's kind of how it happens. As you come in and then you'll have a recommended list to bring to the council for them to then go down, need to whittle down a little bit more. Well, we started at three or four that we really liked out of the six or seven products. Let's see how many you get. It may be that you have seven or eight and you'll want to sit down with those in, in close session and, and discuss which ones of those that you want to bring in. And that will include sitting down saying, okay, here's the ones that need the minimum qualifications that we outlined. These are the ones that we want to, want you to look at. So I know the previous time that we went through this, they, it was whittled down to four and then we had a special session. You have a watch out or we can sign up the panel. And I'm, I'm going to offer a commitment here that if you hold me to it, there's no backing down. If you do this on a Saturday, if you decide to hold the interviews on a Saturday, if you want me to come back, I'm happy to. If it's on a Saturday, I can't do that during the week because I'm, I'm committed to record. But if, if it's on a Saturday and you want to have a part of it, that's your call. I'm happy to come.
Okay.
It gives me an excuse to come back again.
Don't get more than a line. Where you're going is very, very lucky.
Comments, questions?
Not about this.
Oh, okay. 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 Any other comments from any council members? Okay. So do we want to give direction on this? Do we not need a motion for a give direction?
No, we don't. Yeah, I think the direction is kind of maybe, and the staff understands the manner too.
Okay. Okay. So moving on to council staff communications, do we have a city manager report?
I don't have any. I think we've talked everything. So I'll keep my mouth shut.
Okay. Item eight point two, mayor and council members' reports. And we do feature agenda items with that. It sounds like we're going to go back to the city manager report.
I mustn't have reported anything about that. So I don't know how much we can talk about this point.
You were, you're, you're believing her. I would have said, yes.
And, and it was brought up. I think they, they kind of talked about the meeting this morning about, my mind just went blank. Yeah, thank you. Caltrans and the Clean California program. We had a very good meeting with Caltrans on that. It's a program that's moving forward. And we can do this as part of the city, of the city manager report. This is primarily going to be a enhanced trail that will come all the way down as, as was mentioned to the veterans park. And we'll connect it to a future trail system within the park with some other nice things. It also includes the potential for a crossing to get from one side of the road to the other side of the road on 49. And that crossing would have to have something like flashers or something to really let traffic film. I think right now one of the challenges that you have is that you've got kids that sort of cross wherever they care to cross. And they just, they look both ways. They're running like crazy to try and get across there. This is to try and create something that is, although this, this program is not designed for pedestrian safety. It's an enhancement. Clean California is for aesthetics, cleaning things up. It's making things more functional. But on a side note, there are some safety issues that will, that will be a part of that as well. So there's going to be more information brought in that. There'll be some, some outreach and communication there committed to city council. But I thought it was a very good meeting. Caltrans is committed to do it for this.
And you did a wonderful job explaining to them that they need to do it. We don't have staff. The people who are the money. It's a terrific job convincing them that they have to come on board. Hold hard and they, and they agree to it. It's, it's, it's got to be done. They extended the time. It was supposed to be done by June 2023.
Yeah, they added an extra several months.
Five, five more months. Or they're, they're going to give themselves five. That's what I should say, right?
So completion is, I believe, November of 2023 is where we're at. So.
Council member Amber, so if you have any, if you would like to discuss or request for future agenda items?
I don't have anything to discuss. I'm not, I think there's not anything. Good there. I do have future agenda items. Talk to you. And also putting on gallery or the meeting cancellation for Florida.
Thank you, Councilman White.
I guess because on, in, we're kind of back as a regular to be in the beginning of the meeting about Fort Worth July, the Fort Worth July celebration. It's probably what?
You're playing, right? Oh, I'm not.
I thought you were.
I need someone real quick.
Any requests for future agenda items? Councilmember Sin? Anything else you'd like to share or request for future agenda items?
I don't like to carry on with Oscar. I would go from where we, so we're into where we're going.
Yes, we're working on it. We're working on it. We have, we have to figure out some stuff with the city engineer's office and things. And, and it will be, it's pretty obvious that people out there in my city think they know nothing about it, which is not true. Yeah. Like I said earlier, I think there's more decisive steps that council members of Fort Worth, it's been along the same here. There's more, more decisive steps taken by this council as far as getting your staff than there's been in years. I'll say that very clearly.
And then for my council member report, I'll just add that I did go to an ACRA meeting yesterday, which was nice to finally be able to go to one in person. They are having a fundraiser that the city has put on the, the city's Facebook page. And that's on Saturday, June 18th. And so that's a fundraiser for ACRA and at Molly Joyce Park. And then they also, they're doing a paint and sip activity. They also have a number of activities that are getting up and running youth programs and also adult programs. And so I encourage everybody, hopefully anybody who's listening, that you look at ACRA's Facebook page and has a listing of everything that they've got going on. And the, their executive director also gave an update on our kid, our cat program, kids after school program. And he, which I think is over now for the year, but he said that, that we know that it got off to a slow start, but he did say that it kind of ended on a real positive note with really good regular attendance. So that was good to hear. And then as far as future agenda items, I'm also going to add that, yes, I really, I also want to add that we need to keep it on Fox View. And if there is nothing else, I don't, I think we're, we're, we're close to public comment.
I wanted to ask a question about the advertising for the Fourth of July parade. Or that needs to get started.
Yeah, that's good. That's a good thing. You're right.
So do we need to get something about Fourth of July on the, on future agenda?
Yeah, we can, where I, I find out what the staff's doing on that and we'll, we'll pull it.
So with that, I am going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting for ten. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Good job. I'm sorry. I put you through the ringer.